Hello, this is Lauren Seethis with the Black Commission and a podcast called Sharing Space. Today, we are welcoming Danny Graybill. He was a city council candidate for District Nine. Welcome Danny, how are you?
Thank you so much Lauren, thank you. This is a great opportunity.
So let's get started. Who is Danny Graybill?
Danny Graybill is an average guy. First and foremost, I am not a politician. I am a father, a grandfather, a husband. I'm a chaplain with the Florida Baptist Commission, associated with the Disaster Relief Ministry. I am a ministry leader at Westside Baptist Church. I had to hang up my Bible teaching cleats, so to speak, to further pursue this campaign. And I'll be picking that up once everything's done. I'm also a member of the Gideons. And a faithful man of God, the best that I could be, as we all know. And also, I have a bachelor's degree in psychology crisis counseling that I just received. I graduated in 2020 from Liberty University.
Oh, congratulations. That's wonderful. So that's just another notch on the tool up, huh?
Yes.
So what inspired you to run for city council?
It was a calling. There was a day back in August, I was doing a Now Daily Bread devotional that my wife and I share. We've shared every day since we started dating. And it was on leadership. And I usually listen to the audio. And once I listened to the audio, something struck my heart. So I read it again. And I hollered for my wife. I said, Cheryl, we need to talk. And I told her, I'm feeling called to run for office. So we prayed on it. She prayed on it. And came to me and looked me dead in the eyes and said, Danny, through prayer, this calling's true. And it was funny. I said, I don't even know what district I'm in. What do we do? But she said, look, look at your voter ID card. So I did. A few days later, we contacted the supervisor of elections, went downtown, we filed. And here we are. This is divine providence. It's a divine calling. And so I'm being obedient to the call to see where God's going to lead me in this and what he's going to do through it.
Well, were there concerns that you were having prior to the calling? Did you feel like something needed to be different in the community? What was it that you think was the catalyst to deconnection in the calling?
The crime, first and foremost. We live in a very quiet neighborhood, right off of Jamie's Road. It's kind of like one of those best kept secrets.
Okay.
Neighborhoods, a neighborhood where most of the residents have been here 25 to 50 years. And there were two drive-by shootings. They were kind of alert shots, I think is the safe way to call them. A gentleman was still terrorizing an ex-girlfriend from two years ago. And I realized that instead of the crime crumbling inward as a decrease, it was fanning outward in an increase. But I sit in the living room and complain about it. And that's basically what God said to me. Get off your hands. Yelling about it in the living room is getting nothing done. Get out there and make a difference and I'll lead you through it.
Okay. So what do you think the solution is regarding these shootings and the increase in the crime? What is the solution that you think would be, you know, something that you could be a part of?
Loving on our community more than it has been. As a psychology major, I've learned a lot about myself. And how to look into the eyes of people that are hurting. And we've heard the statement, hurting people hurt people. So who are the ones pulling the triggers? Who are the ones that are hurting others? In the course of my campaigning and my canvassing and door knocking, I've encountered many residents that feel disenfranchised. They feel that Jacksonville has forgotten about them. I want to remove that disenfranchisement tag and start spending our tax dollars more productively to enrich and revitalize and redevelop these lower socioeconomic neighborhoods. And I would like to think if people start feeling like the city loves them and is paying attention to them more, they may start thinking twice about pulling the trigger. There's many people that I've spoken to. There's just a lot of disenfranchisement. And may I add something here Lauren? There was a gentleman that really hit at home for me recently. When I knocked on his door, he came to me and he said, so when was District Nine all of a sudden visible again?
Say that last part again. You said, when was District Nine?
Suddenly, when did District Nine suddenly become visible again?
Okay, I understand.
Okay. And I asked him to expand on that. And he doesn't feel alone in this. They feel invisible. They feel like they're not cared about. And that needs to change. And I want to bring that principle of love. Loving thy neighbor. It's not about party superiority or race superiority. It's divine superiority. And we are all one in God's eyes. And so I think I'm going to be a visible councilman to make sure that District Nine no longer feels invisible.
Right. Okay. So you're going to be an advocate for District Nine, right?
I will be their voice.
Was the prior, the prior city council, oh, the city council member now for District Nine, is that Garrett Dennis?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So when you, when we were talking about, you know, the gun violence, is there anything else that's on your platform that you would like to make sure is shared with the public? What other parts of your platform do you want to talk about?
Well, first of all, I think defunding JSO is a turn in the wrong direction. If we need to rely on JSO to step up and find a new productive strategy to address the crime, that of course, number one, would have to be something that we'd have to look into. We need to hold JSO accountable. Make sure, and we got to make sure who we're hiring in JSO as well. Just like so many different groups, establishments, whatever you may call them, where they are all judged for the actions of a few, so to speak. There are good officers and there's bad officers. We need to hold JSO more accountable. And overall, something that may be out of my hands. But do we stiffen penalties to send a message? We have the Florida 1020 life law. It seems to me that that's more, that's just a slap on the wrist anymore. You know, nobody wants to go to prison for the rest of their life. But if they want to pull down and commit a crime, maybe a little more than 10 years might send a stronger message where they might think twice about it.
Are we talking about the police committing the crime or are we talking about citizens?
Well, regardless who, whoever commits a crime with a gun, whether they're behind the badge or in front of the badge.
Okay.
You know, when somebody commits a crime with a gun, that is a criminal act, it doesn't matter who they are. They just remove themselves and put themselves in the general population.
Okay.
There should be no faith in prison there.
Right. So the city council have a big, do you think right now that city council has a lot of influence in relation to the FOP and the sheriff making the decisions of weeding out the bad apples?
Does city council have or should they? What was the question?
No, does, do you think at this time that city council has an influence on the FOP and the sheriff when it comes to weeding out the bad apples?
That's a good question. I'm not sure if they do. Maybe they should more. Because city council has unlimited legislative power. But of course, you have city council, you have JSO, and then the school board. They're all three separate entities. But we answer the mayor. I think city council should be more vocal about it. Because city council represents the city as a whole, split off into different districts.
I think what kind of concerns me personally, and I'm going to share this and just put it out there, is that JSO, the line workers, which are the police or the sheriffs, they are under the union, the, what is it, the FOP. So the FOP is their union. There is negotiations. There's a collective bargaining agreement. So when you consider that, there are certain things that city council can and cannot do. Because I'm not sure, and this is where I'm a little, you know, not aware of, is the negotiations are done with question mark. I'm not sure who negotiates with the FOP. To, you know, talk about wages, how many, you know, when people get mad about adding more officers, it really is based on the collective bargaining agreement. Every year, you have to have a certain amount of officers. You have some that retire. So they call that, you know, leaving by attrition. There's some that might get fired. So when they get below that threshold, then they need to add more police officers to meet what the agreement was between them and the county. You understand what I'm saying? So that's a union thing, but I'm not sure how much influence the city council really has when it comes to, you know, the budget, the police budget, because some of that is negotiated. And I know the sheriff has some leeway, but this is where maybe some more investigation on your behalf might work in your favor, just to understand how that works. And a lot of people not, you know, don't understand how unions work. And unions, the one thing I used to be concerned about with the FOP is like, we'll hear on the news that officer was, you know, he's taken off of the field administratively. That means that he's still going to get his wages and they'll handle it internally. Are you aware that there have been attempts to have some type of citizen review board? Or, oh my goodness, I cannot remember the other term, but a citizen review board of such. Do you want to, do you know what that's about?
Yes, I've heard that brought to the table. And that's a very, very touchy subject right now. When it comes to a citizens review board, now you're looking at, you're opening doors to bias, to discrimination, to personal emotions. It's really, that's something I'd have to really sit down and research and kind of analyze that on my own. That's been brought up to me as well.
I do know the other name, Police Accountability Commission. So yeah, police accountability. So either one, you know, we're trying to figure out which one would be the best. We did have communication with Sheriff Mike Williams a couple of years ago. And they came out with two different things that Sheriff Mike Williams approved of. There was no back and forth. There was no compromise. He gave us a list of like two different ways that he might agree, but it was really heavy laden on the sheriff's department really being able to regulate. Not sharing information, not sharing videos on a certain amount of time. We later, within the last two years, had a conversation collectively. And a young lady by the name of Christina Kittle, who is with Jacksonville Community Action Committee, asked Melissa Nelson and Sheriff Mike Williams to agree to at least release video footage to the families within a certain amount of time. I think it's like 48 hours. So that family of the victims would be able to know and see what happened. Whether it's police related or whatever, but, and I believe Melissa Nelson and the Sheriff Mike Williams agreed to that. So that's just a little bit of update information for you. And I apologize for digressing. But all that is part of what you will be working on, what you'll be doing. It's history for you. So I'm not sure if you were aware of that, but I just wanted to share that so that you can consider as you're going through with your campaign.
I appreciate that. You know, I, along with my, myself, along with many of the other candidates that are running, we're certainly not going into the office with a PhD as to how to perform. You know, being at city council several times as a citizen to speak out, you hear a lot of what's on people's hearts. And speaking, you know, there are, there are so many issues right now that seem to overshadow others that tend to bubble to the surface. So I appreciate that wisdom and that knowledge. You know, the issues like this, I can assure you, whatever decisions I make will be based on morals and ethical standards. There's nothing self-serving in my heart whatsoever. My main goal is to do what's best for our community and the people in it. Whether it hurts somebody else's feelings at a higher level of authority is really none of my concern. I've even, I verbally said to some other councilmen with a slight bit of fun sarcasm, but with sincerity, that I'm not, I'm not running for city council to make friends in city council.
Right, okay.
My friends are the people that I serve. My friends are my community. These are the people I really need to look out for.
With that being said, next question, monuments, should they stay or should they go?
I am opposed to removing them. Okay. I'm opposed to removing them. There's a couple of very simple reasons why. All across our nation, there are different monuments commemorating so many different facets of history. Removing a monument doesn't erase what happened in history. And so I feel that regardless of the situation behind any monument, we should, as a nation, learn from, learn from our mistakes, learn from the travesties, but learn from the triumphs and the victories as well. We need to learn. Sometimes these should be reminders, even myself looking at it going, okay, well, that was a mess. Reminds, where do we need to fix this? But the one thing that really stands out is when $1.3 million was put on the table to remove one historic monument. How much revitalization could we do with $1.3 million? I'd rather see that kind of money go back into rebuilding our community, fixing our infrastructure, giving people better places to live, reducing the crime in our city. It goes on and on and on. We know the infrastructure issues. We know the issues that are in our streets. We need to start spending our money a whole lot more productively.
Okay. Good point. Um, so as we talk about, so you're going right into the next topic. You were talking about the $1.3 billion, million dollars, the 2023 budget. What should be included and what should not?
What should be included in the 2023 budget? Number one, I mean, our infrastructure. I mean, well, let me backtrack on that. We had a tax imposed to help with infrastructure. These taxes need to be decreased and repealed, first and foremost. We need to start putting more emphasis in our budget to fix our roads. Our roads are an absolute mess. And potholes, lack of sidewalks. I mean, we need some of these streets, we need more sidewalks on because we have so much pedestrian traffic. Jacksonville continues to populate. I know a lot of people are on the fence about housing, housing issues and where to build new housing. But we need housing. We need to be able to fund housing in order to make sure we don't increase homelessness.
Right.
Because if people coming into Jacksonville don't have a place to live, they're going to be on the streets.
If the people who are already in Jacksonville don't have affordable housing, they're not going to have a place to live.
Right. And that is a great, affordable housing all day long. Our prices have gone off the charts. Three two, three bedroom, two baths for $250,000 is unspeakable. Absolutely unspeakable. Yes, we do need to fund affordable housing. We need to fund repairs in our city to rejuvenate the urban core, areas like Moncrief and Kings. I drove through those and I, my heart broke. And, you know, code violation. I mean, this is off the budget question. But, you know, I'm concerned about how many people are living in subpar housing where code violations are rampant. Nobody's saying anything about it.
Many.
Yes. And that needs to stop. We need, so going back to the budget, how do we house these people? If we're going to either fix their home, or if it's going to be condemned and torn down, we need to relocate these families.
Right.
We need to fund community centers a whole lot more than they are. Community centers, I love them, but without the funding, they can't stay open on the weekends to keep our children off the streets.
Right.
So there, we need a whole lot, a better budget structure with our tax dollars other than worrying about things like taking down one monument to appease.
So what should not be in the budget? That, the monument money? What else?
What should not be in a budget? That's a question Lauren, I wish I could answer. I really don't have an answer for that. That's something that would come more once I get into office and I have access to budget information. And that's when I start to fight.
Okay.
When I'm looking at things in this budget saying, why is this even here? We have so much more to do here. We need to eliminate this. We need to, I guess, as an analogy, if it's the correct way to state this, we need to start stitching up the big wounds in Jacksonville instead of putting Band-Aids on the smallest grapes.
Okay.
Okay. And when it comes to infrastructure, we do need money for infrastructure. But there's one thing that our president did do that, that I've been waiting to reap the benefits from. And it was passing a $1 trillion infrastructure spending bill for our nation. And then Lenny Curry turns around and wants to add another six cent gas tax onto a six cent tax that's already there. Where's our infrastructure money? Here comes the fight again. How do we get our government, our national government, to write this check for Jacksonville? To help us improve our infrastructure?
Are you familiar with the tax referendum?
The tax referendum vaguely.
Okay. So that has to do with raising taxes to fund increased hiring of teachers. It's really for the education.
Oh, the one mil?
Yeah, the one mil.
Oh, absolutely.
But it's called, I guess they named it the tax referendum. Yes.
Okay, yeah. It's the one mil property tax increase?
Yes. Do you support that?
Yes, I'm absolutely opposed to it.
You're opposed?
Absolutely.
Okay. For what reason? If you could help me understand.
Without being able to give you numbers, there's a bigger budget in the school board than the school board's letting people wear on. Last year, there was, and I believe it was in July of 2021, there was, there was money put out for teacher incentives to raise starting teachers' pay. And they had until October to disperse those funds. 16 counties in Florida missed the deadline. And the money went into a general revenue fund. So why aren't they using that? Why are they continuing to dip into Duval County residents' pockets to increase the starting pay of floor level teachers coming into school? I look at it as an act of desperation. This is somebody who worked for DCPS. Teachers are not too thrilled about it because, you know, you have teachers that are tenured, 10, 15, 20 years. And now you have an entry level teacher coming in, making almost the same amount of money.
I agree 100%.
Yeah. They're going to give to them. They need to increase the pay of the tenured teachers as well.
That's what the tax referendum is for. The tax.
Yeah, that was part of it.
Right. To make sure that the senior teachers are getting what they deserve. But what I found out today, I learned today, and I went to a meeting that had to do with education. And we talked about the tax referendum. And it looks like it's only going to be $23 a month extra for the taxpayer. To me, that's Papa John's pizza. Not ordering once a month Papa John's pizza.
Okay.
You understand what I'm saying? So it's really not that much. And it's not something that the upper middle class, middle class taxpayers, and of course, the upper class taxpayers are going to miss out of their pocket. They get pay increases. Taxes increase all the time, right? So I'm just curious. I'm interesting, I'm very interested in your answer. And it was a good one. It's, you know, it's a great answer. That's how you feel. But just to give you a little bit of information that I learned in regards to how much, I learned today, it was $23 a month for the average taxpayer, which is like, wow, that's.
It's a dollar for every thousand dollars that the property values. So if somebody has a home that's worth $125,000, it'll be $125 a year extra.
Right.
Part of the issue, right, but part of my issue on the pushback on that is we already have a 12 cent gas tax. When do the taxes stop? And on top of that, we're in the midst of inflation. So people are struggling to survive right now while, while other entities are trying to pull more money out of their pocket.
The people that are struggling are the low income people and a lot of low income people using rent. So the tax referendum is helping their children get a better education. It's not affecting them because, like I said, many of them are not homeowners. The tax, the gas tax hike is affecting them because they need to get to work. And their wages do not allow them to have enough money to pay for gas. That's, you know, those are, that's like apple and oranges. When we're talking about, you know, just talking about the tax referendum and the need to, there's multiple things that the tax referendum can do. But I definitely respect your answer and I respect where you're coming from. I'm not trying to be argumentative. I was just wanting to share like how much it would be per month. That's what I learned today. So I feel like.
And it doesn't sound like a whole lot.
Yeah.
But it depends who you're talking to.
Right.
You know, to somebody, it can mean a matter of cents. To another person, it could be, it could be the, it could be equivalent to losing a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Just hypothetically. But, you know, Diane Green just got a $50,000 a year. What was it? She went up to $300,000 a year? So they could, the school board could give the superintendent a raise, but they want to tax the residents for increasing teachers' pay.
Do you think she deserved it?
Absolutely.
No? Okay. I'm not gonna say it.
And trust me. I work in the school district and there's, yeah, there are things that I have seen that just make me shake my head a little more than I should. The school district needs a lot of fixing internally.
So as we move forward before we end, I definitely wanted to ask you this last question. Why Danny Graybill for District Nine?
I'm bringing a heart of compassion and empathy into this. My life hasn't been all peaches and cream. There were times in my past where I've struggled with drugs and alcohol, thankful to the Lord, 16 years of sobriety.
Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you. I have, I've wondered where my next meal's going to come from. I wondered where I'm going to lay my head to sleep. I've been in these situations. And so I bring that level of compassion and empathy, especially to that portion of our community. Because we never say, we know what you're going through, because our struggles are all individual to ourselves. But I can relate to it. As a man of faith, I put my trust in the Lord. He has done amazing things through this campaign thus far. And he put a statement on my heart that if we apply Christian principles to politics, politics cannot defile our Christian principles.
All right.
You know, so it comes down to where you leave your principles on the steps to City Hall when you go to work? Or do you take them into the chambers with you? I want to be a visible councilman. Like I said earlier, I think that's one of the best answers. Why? I care about my community. I love my community. And I think that we can make things change for the better. And to be a pebble in the pond, Lauren, what I mean by that? What I mean by that. And, and you know, no, no, nobody, nobody likes to be one up as you.
Yeah.
So Danny Graybill in District Nine does something wonderful. This one thing that, that makes a change in District Nine. Now can it ripple outward?
Right.
The surrounding districts say, well, he did that. Maybe I should try that too. We all work together as one unit. To represent Duval County as a whole, per our respective districts. I want to be the pebble in the pond. I want to show people that I am who I say I am. I'm in it to win it, but I'm not in it for the win. I'm in it for the call.
Okay. Well, with that being said, I appreciate your answers. Um, and I just learned so much about you today and I appreciate you sharing some space with us. Um, before we leave, I wanted to just make sure that the audience understands that we do have more. Podcasts coming with Candidates One on One and stay tuned um, as we share space with other candidates as well. Thank you so much, Mr. Gray, Graybill for coming today and best of luck on your um, campaign.
Thank you so much, Lauren. Thank you for the Black Commission and what you do for our community. And thank you for this opportunity to speak with you today.
You are most welcome. Thank, take care.
Thank you. Have a blessed day.